Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, February 14th. This is a city council voting meeting. We'll start by any introductions or announcements. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have some announcements. Happy Valentine's Day and happy 111th birthday to the state of Arizona. The Prescott Tourism Office will be accepting applications for Tourism Advisory Committee, TAC, and Prescott Area Arts and Humanities Council grants beginning Monday, March 6th through Monday, April 10th, 2023 at 5:00 p.m. These grants are designed to assist registered nonprofit organizations hosting events in Prescott between July 1, 2023, and June 30th of 2024. The goal of the grant is to encourage event marketing outside of the Prescott area to encourage overnight visitation. These grants are funded by the city's transient occupancy tax, or BET tax. Events eligible for up to $5,000, depending on their rating and how many organizations successfully apply. The grant is available only to registered nonprofit organizations. There will be a mandatory meeting. All applicants must attend on Wednesday, March 8th, 2023, at 3:30 p.m. at the old City Hall Council Chambers, also this building currently. Grant applications are due no later than Monday, April 10th, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. Announcement number two: City Council Subcommittee on Appointments is seeking applications from citizens who are interested in serving on the Fire Board of Appeals. There are two vacancies for the term ending in March 2025. You must be a Prescott resident to apply. Friendly reminder that the new solid waste rate pickup rates and transfer station rates will be in effect March 1st, 2023. Finally, next weekend, an observance of Presidents' Day on Monday, February 20th, the city offices and Prescott Public Library will be closed, and some services will be affected. Solid Waste Services, including trash collection and transfer station, will be operating as usual.
I appreciate that. Mayor Protam will now have an invocation from Reverend Philip Shaw from St. Louis Episcopal Parish, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from Councilwoman Cantelme.
Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, we thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with clarity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see the dignity and humanity of those who disagree with us, and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, gracious God, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of all your children. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
And the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protam Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Cantelme.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
All are present.
We now will have a presentation in recognition of outgoing City Manager Michael Lamar.
Am I coming with you, Mr. Mayor? Please step off to the...
Well, Michael, it's been six long years. It's been longer considering what you took on when you first arrived.
Sometimes that's the case.
We were dealing with a substantial sober living home situation here in the city and the consequential homelessness and even connected crime issues, which were very substantial. You stepped in with an $86 million unfunded pension liability that had to be dealt with.
Yes.
And then, over that period of time, subsequent to that, all of the developmental agreements, whether it was the Deepwell Ranch, or the years of negotiation for the Arizona Eco-Development, and some of those issues are continuing to be a challenge. We were losing our commercial air service with Great Lakes Airlines, but we did that leakage study and were able to make an agreement with SkyWest Airlines to replace them with a substantial commercial service in our airport, and consequently being able to build a great terminal out there. So we look at the substantial number of issues that occurred over that period of time, and we certainly appreciate all the good work that you did in leading the city with all those challenges.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that.
This beautiful crystal appreciation award presented to Michael Lamar in great deep gratitude for your significant contributions. Your efforts have made a difference to our organization and the city, so thank you for all you've done. City of Prescott, February 14th, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There you go.
Appreciate it, guys. I don't want to belabor this. We've already had a long day, and it'll be longer if I sit up here too long. But it really has been an honor to be the city manager here since October of 2016, and it's a privilege to work with the kind of people I have every day that are such first-rate public servants. Thank you all, all 520 out of you. And I'm looking forward to being on that side, maybe not in these seats, because we're going to be in a new building, to be a resident of this fine community and watch where we go from here. So, thank you.
All right, we'll go on to the open call to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement, and residents may comment and address council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the open call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total. I do not have any green speaker cards. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Okay.
All right, hearing none, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I think I would like to pull item 8J. And I'll entertain a motion on the remainder of the consent agenda items.
I second.
Have that motion first.
Any motion, sorry. I move to approve items A through K minus J. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, I'd like to propose a language on 8J rather than simply the approval of the settlement dispersments. I'd like to move to receive the allocated default percentage as outlined in the One Arizona Plan, paid directly to the City of Prescott, with the City of Prescott being responsible for allocating those funds to approve strategies as outlined in Exhibit A of the One Arizona Plan, and the city providing annual reports to Yavapai County Community Health Services as outlined in Section F5 of the One Arizona Plan, and directing that all future payments be sent directly to the City of Prescott unless the city contacts Yavapai County Community Health Services to request a change in dispersments.
Third.
So I have a motion and a second. Any other discussions? Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Very good. We'll move on to item 9, Consent Ordinance.
Adoption of Ordinance Number 2023-1822, in ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the purchase and acceptance of a public trial easement from the Salvation Army, a California corporation, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said purchase and acceptance. And adoption of Ordinance Number 2023-1823, in ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the granting of a utility easement to Arizona Public Service Company and Arizona Corporation, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said easement.
All right, do we have any additional presentation information on these? Not hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt consent ordinance items 9A and 9B.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Councilman Tenney. Thank you. Councilman Moore.
Considering my options.
Passes 7-0.
There are two options there.
Being a little conflicted from him.
All right, we'll move on to the liquor license.
Public hearing and consideration for a new Series 7 beer and wine liquor license application from Eric Lyon Burton, applicant for Betsy's, location 211 North Granite Street. The application fee has been paid, and the sign has been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance, and no public comments have been received.
All right, is the applicant here? Come on up and tell us about your new location and your business.
All right, so the idea behind this is to have high-end wines from around the world that we're going to bring in to Prescott, and we're going to have a nice, quiet place that we've remodeled on the inside of the existing house to be able to be quiet and a place to taste some fine wines.
So that's going to be right across the street from Founding Fathers?
Correct. And we've been working in conjunction with Grant and Jesse that own Founding Fathers to make sure that we're not stepping on anybody's toes, so everybody's in agreement.
Sounds like a well-coordinated plan, with all their beer options over there, and you'll have fine wines across the street. Sounds like we've identified a niche and you're going to be able to fill it.
Sure.
Thank you for investing in our community and helping to revitalize that area.
It's been a lot of fun.
Very good. Thank you very much. Good luck with your business there, and I'm sure we'll be patronizing that in the future.
Fantastic. Thank you all.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve liquor license number 216467 for new Series 07 Beer and Wine Liquor License application for Betsy's, location 211 North Granite Street.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, we move on to the regular agenda, item 11A.
Update regarding the mayor's Charter Review Commission. So, Mayor and council, I am going to just provide you with a brief update again with regard to the work that the Charter Review Commission is currently doing. As you're aware, they are in the process of reviewing the charter in its totality for possible amendments on the 2023 general election ballot. The group has approved amended language provided by myself and the legal department for a number of sections to the city charter, including term of mayor, qualifications for council, mayor protam, stipend for mayor and council attendance policy, and consideration of petitions. And they are continuing to meet twice monthly to go over the additional charter sections as well. The approved amendments and all others will be presented to council during the study session in April for your review and comments, and then pending approval at a future voting meeting. Again, those will be added to the November 7th general election ballot.
Thank you very much, city clerk. I think they're making some significant progress there. I think it's important that they continue to focus on the primary amendments, even though there's a lot of language and kind of a housekeeping cleanup that probably needs to be done, but that may be subsequent to this initial list of charter amendments we'll see on the ballot.
I have a question. If someone who's not on the committee or maybe a council member has some suggestions, how do they get those suggestions looked at?
You can submit it to me, and I'll include it on a future agenda for them.
Okay, thank you.
And these are open public meetings.
They are, of course, yes.
Very good. Any other current concerns or questions about the progress of the Charter Review Commission? Hearing none, we'll move on to legislative update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am Tyler Goodman, interim city manager, here with another legislative update. I wanted to start with good news, because I really only have one bit of good news, and the rest is pretty bad. But the good news is that our bill regarding the Glassford Dells Regional Park got out of committee thanks to the mayor, Joe Baines. Town of Prescott Valley, I believe Mayor Palguda was there as well, and Barry Aaron's all testified in behalf of the bill. And they approved it 603, meaning they voted not present. I think there were some questions on how this would fit in overall with the budget of the project the legislators saw. There's only 3.5 million, but the whole project's going to be about 22 million, so they had some questions that we've been able to answer since, and it wasn't a big deal. It does go to the Appropriations Committee tomorrow, and Joe Baines will be there as well to testify, as well as Barry Aaron's. And we don't suspect any major pushback in that committee either. So it's good news so far, and the bill has support. Now on to the more troubling news, I guess. I'll give you an update on the attempts to eliminate certain taxes, which we've talked about before. And for many of these, there's mere legislation in each chamber. So the Senate has a version, the House has a version. They're largely the same, if not completely the same. So, starting in the House and the Senate, we'll talk about the food-for-home consumption. If they are to eliminate that tax, it would be about $6 million for the City of Prescott every year that that would eliminate. The one in the House did pass its committee 6 to 4. It was a party-line vote, six Republicans for it and four Democrats against it. I talked to Barry Aaron's, and I asked him, what are the realities behind this and the residential rental tax bills? Both have these mere bills in each chamber. And he said, honestly, the thought is that the governor would veto both if they came, if they reach her desk. But, of course, we won't know that until it reaches her desk, so you don't really want it to get to that point either. The further this gets in the session as well, it turns into bargaining chips for budget votes, so you don't really want that either. So with all that said, this is really priority number one, as well as another bill I'll touch on at the end of my update, for the League of Cities and Towns. And I can tell you Barry Aaron's has been there. Mark's been great, providing us information on how this would impact us. We've also broken down police and fire expenditures, telling the legislators this would really impact public safety. If it has to do with our general fund, it has to do with public safety. So we've been at every single one of these hearings testifying it on behalf of the city from our standpoint, and that's lockstep with the League of Cities and many, many other cities and towns that have been there. So they've made it through committee. However, they need to make it to the floor of their chambers, and we'll continue to push there as well, and kind of just see what the support, or maybe it starts to shift, and there might not be as much support going forward, but we're very tightly looking at this. And then again, I won't spend much time. The residential rental tax, this is about $2 million per year for the City of Prescott if this was to go through as well. They both, both versions passed through their committees and their chambers, and they will be heard on the floor sooner than later. They're not scheduled quite yet, but we, again, are keeping an eye on it pretty much every day. This, I should clarify that this version of that residential rental bill out of the Senate did pass out of the Senate and is being sent to the House. So that one did get support, 16 to 14, party-line vote, which kind of gives you the indication that the governor is most likely going to veto this if it gets to that point. Another tax cut, potentially, the corporate income tax. I spoke on this a couple weeks ago. This would phase down or bring down that corporate income tax rate over, I believe, the next three years. And if it did get to that point of its full implementation, it's just under $1 million a year for the city as part of our shared revenues. So another potentially big hit. This one did pass out of its committee, which was the House Appropriations, and it should be going through the rules and onto the floor of the House pretty soon.
So Tyler, does shared revenue go into the general fund?
Typically doesn't. In this case, it does, yes. Yeah, especially for this.
So we have a total of potentially about $8 million lost in the general fund if these three issues were to pass.
It would be closer to 9 million per year. Yeah. Now, with the vehicle license tax bill, I just found out as I was checking on bills in the last half hour, this one failed in committee, I believe, yesterday. And so that's good news, because what this would have done is to mandate that any shared revenue we get from vehicle license taxes would have to be used for transportation, basically road projects. We typically take it into our general fund and use it as we see fit, which is typically public safety, as you know. So that would have been another almost $4 million hit. It still would have come to us, we just would have had to have budgeted it for transportation, road projects, that sort of thing, instead of using it how we desire as a community. But luckily, that failed in committee. So that's, we say dead for now, because nothing's ever dead till it's over. This one, I've heard quite a bit about. I know Councilwoman Cantelme's been very worried about this. The good news is, this was brought to committee, and it was discussed, and it was held, because the votes weren't there in committee. They knew the votes weren't there, so they didn't even vote on it, I think, to kind of save face. Barry Aaron's was there, testifying on our behalf. We've spoken with Chief Bonney many times and got the information of how this would exactly impact us. And fortunately, it died there in committee. What's coming of it now is a study committee that would happen over the summer.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Councilwoman Cantelme.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, I have been following this, but for the reasons that I want to explain real quickly, is we would all like to be able to achieve this, and I think the chief is here, both the police and the fire. But again, just as we heard today from Chief Dura, we need the money to make this happen. We want that to happen, so we'll have to keep watching that. Having it legislated and mandated, if we're not ready for it, would not be a good scenario for Prescott. Thank you.
Another example of state control, unfunded mandates. So they want to take $9 million away from our general fund, but expect our public safety to be able to respond more promptly with more staff and more equipment. So as I mentioned, my magic wand has still been backordered in Long Beach, so until it shows up, you know, we have to deal with legitimate budget realities.
We do, and I should mention that we are working to get Chief Bonney on the study committee so that we can have a presence there, share information, and be realistic with what this would actually take for a community like ours.
Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. Tyler, just out of curiosity, have you had any indication from our elected representatives from these communities, from our community, about, have we had communication from the City of Prescott to say what the impacts of these three bills would potentially be for us?
Yes, yes, we have. And I can tell you that Barry Aaron's largely, as he's in person, which tends to drive a point further home, he does communicate this with our delegates, as well as any committee member that this is going through. And now that some of them are going to the House or the floor, excuse me, he's working the votes, so to speak, right, so that we can know how it's lining up.
Thank you.
All right, the next few I'll go through pretty quickly. There is a bill, Senate Bill 1011, that would have to do with, and I'll just read it to you, municipal elections may be held with the candidate's political party registration indicated on the ballot. Typically, as you know, in the state of Arizona, there are nonpartisan elections at the local level. That's been a historical truth, and I think that most cities and towns appreciate that and that approach. Of course, this doesn't force you to do it, but it's one step closer, and then there may rise questions of, well, why aren't you? Why don't you want to list yourself as one party or another on your local election? So this did get through its committee, and it got through the Senate, and it's been sent over to the House. I know the League's opposed to this. I'm not really even sure why this came about, but it's there, and we are actively pushing against it. Inspections on sober living homes, this bill passed out of Senate Commerce, and so it needs to go to the Senate floor sooner than later. This would allow us as a city to conduct inspections on sober living homes, basically for fire code and zoning ordinances. We do enforce zoning ordinances currently with sober living homes, and that's basically all the state allows us to regulate at this point in time with sober living homes. So we do that portion, but the fire codes would open the door, so to speak, to allow for those inspections to occur at those facilities.
Mayor, may I ask a question? And this may be, thank you, this may be a question for Chief Dura, or maybe you know off the top of your head. If there is a reasonable cause for concern about a fire code violation in any business or building, would we be prohibited from investigating that at this point?
With sober living homes, we may be, and I don't know, Joe actually might know more than I do, except the state legislature has preempted cities from really even knowing about sober living homes, except for zoning ordinance, which we do have. They're not allowed to be within, I think it's 800 feet of one another. So we can enforce that, but pretty much everything else, the registration, the fire code, may be a gray area where right now there's not enough clarity, and that's why the push. But it's kind of one of those sticky situations where we're trying not to do too much, because it could get us in trouble at the state level.
That's remarkable to me, that if there was reasonable suspicion of a fire code violation, that we would be potentially prohibited from following up on that. Am I understanding that correctly?
The additional people living in the one place is part of what establishes the reasonable basis for a possible fire code violation. So not knowing that, or not by law knowing that they exist or where they exist, prevents us from making those types of inspections, whereas with this addition, and I think Chief will talk about it, but we then could know, and we don't have to play ignorant to the fact that there's a lot of people living in one space, or potentially.
Yeah, I'm glad you're a fire chief. So the way that the International Fire Code is set up, it bases off the International Building Code. Those are restricted by occupancy classification, and private homes are excluded from that. That's under the International Building Code. The International Fire Code is technically a maintenance code of the International Building Code, not the residential code. And so therefore, when we go in and apply the fire code, we have a problem applying it in places that aren't defined as non-single-family residences. The question then becomes, on a sober living home, where does it fall, right? Is it a business with folks living there that aren't part of your family? Or is it a, you know, you see where I'm going with this. We basically can't go into somebody's private residence and enforce the fire code, but if we do have a legitimate concern in an occupancy that's not a private residence, then absolutely we can use the current fire code to ensure fire safety in the community.
Okay. Fair enough. I appreciate the clarification. It seems that there is a narrow window of circumstances in which this legislation wouldn't be entirely redundant.
Councilwoman Cantelme.
Thank you, Mayor. Tyler, I have a question for, and maybe George Worley can answer this, but didn't we establish during the Sober Living Homes Ad Hoc Committee that the definition of occupancy was two people per bedroom? Is that still the way it is?
I believe it is, but again, I'm not sure, I'm not sure with the state taking much of the control out of cities' hands, that, again, that gray area. Not quite sure.
Thank you.
All right, the next bill has to do with political signs. As you know, we do have a sign-free zone... two, or sign-free zones, which are allowed by the state. And they typically help tourism areas within a city to stay a little bit neater, cleaner, and less proliferated with political and other types of signage. So we've been employing that for a number of years, and it has worked very well. In fact, it helps a lot with our code enforcement because it's clear, right? If there's a sign in the right of way, you pull it. If it's a political sign, it's a little more nuanced, but it allows you to clearly delineate what's going on where. This bill would tweak that and make it more challenging based on a REOC score, which I had to Google, and honestly, I don't remember even how to define that at this point. But it has to do with maybe size or proliferation of signs in a certain zone, and maybe Joe remembers that.
REOC score real briefly. It's a kind of anti-gerrymandering type score. And so in order to have a REOC score that they want, it has to be more of a circular format rather than kind of elongated format. And so currently, one of our non-sign zones runs all the way down one of our major highways, and that would not be in compliance.
So it would essentially be gerrymandering instead of, it would be a line down Highway 89, because we have it basically from near the airport, down 89, and another one in downtown.
Because there are size limits on the amount of area that you can have under these non-sign zones. And so basically, it's eliminating and making sure you have two kind of small concentrated areas in more of a circular area, as opposed to a long, elongated area like we currently have. We couldn't comply under our current version of our ordinance.
Yeah. Thanks for that clarification, Joe, and that's why, again, we're opposed. We've let the League know. The League's also opposed for those very same reasons. It's taking away whatever level of control they did give to us about three years ago. Now it's bringing it back. So that passed out of committee and it's going to go to the Senate floor pretty soon. Now, the next two bills. This one, Administrative Review of Approvals and Developments. This has a mere bill in the House, which is just below this, but I'll kind of give some background. If you remember, last year, there was a by right zoning bill, which would have preempted cities largely with single-family residential zoning. That's probably ringing a bell. What came of that, because that would have been a major overhaul, was a study committee over the summer. Cities and towns participated. The mayor spoke at one of those meetings, I think in Sedona. And we gave a lot of input. But the state legislature is the state legislature, and they've run two different bills. I'll go over both types. And believe it or not, this is actually the better of the two. President Warren Peterson, out of the Senate, ran this bill, and this came out of the conversations over the summer. So what it does is it gives cities the option of passing an ordinance or adopting an ordinance to authorize administrative personnel, so city staff, to review and approve site plans, development plans, pre-plats, final plats, without a public hearing. It would authorize administrative personnel to review and approve design review plans based on certain standards without a public hearing. It also would allow for us to adopt a self-certification program, allowing registered architects and engineers to certify and be responsible for compliance. So it's basically saying, hey, if they're willing to put their stamp and signature on it, you shouldn't be worried about it, city. And that's the bulk of it. So that's one of the results of the study commission over the summer. Now, again, you're allowed to do it. They're not forcing cities to do it, but I can see that we would have some big concerns with this. So that passed out of Senate committee and hasn't been heard on the floor yet. And again, there's a House version as well. So it's a mere bill that is being run in both chambers. I know you probably have questions on this, but I'll touch on the other one first before I turn it over, which is the last one, Senate Bill 1117, and it looks pretty innocuous, but it's a strike everything bill. And we got a lot more information on this in the past couple of business days. And so I shared, I sent counsel more of a bullet point briefing, which is a lot more easy to consume than the actual bill. But I'll touch on just the four or five major points of that bill, 1117. All cities and towns with populations of 25,000 or more are preempted in all housing matters. In cities and towns with populations of more than 25,000, any application to rezone land to a residential use and multifamily projects must be approved administratively, without any public notice, public hearing or review by a board or commission, rezoning, use permit, or amendment to the voter-approved general plan. This obviously prevents residents from learning about the project, giving any feedback, staying abreast of the issues. Multifamily projects are entitled to heights of 60 feet, or the highest allowable height within one mile. In all cities and towns, the bill preempts local zoning regulations applicable to single-family zoning districts. Any minimum lot size requirement larger than 4,000 square feet is prohibited. This upends the single-family zoning because it creates a much, much more dense, single-family development. And it goes on and on. I basically have pages and pages. But again, I called Barry and asked, because this is one of those bills that you throw everything at it and you see what you can get. That's kind of my feeling about it. So I asked Barry Aaron's, what is the reality of this bill? He said this is going to be, he says it contains too much for any one bill, number one. It's just not reasonable for any one bill. It also is very, it's divided on party lines largely. There might be some on the fringe, kind of back and forth. But he said that if this does get any sort of momentum, which it passed out of committee with the strike everything amendment, it's not too surprising, but he said it would be a very long, protracted battle about the outcome of this bill. So it's not a guarantee. There are so many things that would need to be amended or eliminated completely. I can tell you that the League of Cities is very, very opposed to this. They oppose it in committee. They're opposing it as it's going to the floor, and they're working this one just as hard as those tax cut bills. This is kind of priority 1A and 1B with the tax cuts. So a lot going on, and I'm happy to answer any questions on these, if I can.
Councilmember Rusing.
These last two bills look like an attack on single-family neighborhoods and homeowners. No public input, no transparency. Is there a specific lobbying group or special interest group that's behind these bills?
Typically, I'm not completely certain, but the, I think there's a Home Builders Association of Arizona. There's several large lobbying groups that have to do with home building, land use, development, those types of things. However, I can tell you that many of the legislators are very concerned with affordable housing, workforce housing. Arizona, and nobody's surprised by this, is facing a crisis in that regard. They're trying to find a legislative solution through passing a bill like this. They think it's going to be the panacea. But taking away local oversight, control, design guidelines, densities, you know, any public input, we're obviously pushing back very hard. That is not the way to do it. And in fact, that's the complete opposite of what their study committee heard all summer long. But they decided to basically pick up the baton from last year and create something like this.
Thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Tyler, I want to go back to your very first item, the Glassford Hill appropriations. There's a story on the front page of the newspaper today about how the, they had passed the budget, you know, successfully already so early in the season. Could this, I don't know what you want to call it, could this affect the appropriation of the money for Glassford Hill? What was in the paper today?
The state budget?
Yeah.
Okay. I haven't seen that specific article, but I do know that budget bills were passed out of the House, I believe, yesterday. And I also asked Barry about that. He said that it would not affect our bill, since this is going through the process it needs to, and one won't preempt the other. He thinks that before a final bill is adopted, it will be folded into that. And we're still showing support as we've gone through committee and appropriation. So that certainly won't hurt us. And he thinks that some of those budget bills aren't going to be approved in the Senate, for example.
Sure.
It's still being...
Yeah, it sounded pretty hokey, the article.
It's still being very much negotiated, yeah.
Well, I appreciate the update. It's just another example. It seems like every year, the state legislature wants to micromanage all of our communities, particularly rural communities, without having an understanding or appreciation of what the consequences can be. I know that they're being challenged in the Valley for more housing for workers because of the large number of big corporations that are building, relocating, and expanding there. But when they pass these broad-based bills, the impact on local communities can be very, very difficult to manage. So I think that just shows another example of why home rule is important here, and why it's important that we retain Barry Aaron's a number of years ago, and his ability to advocate for our interests down in the legislature is certainly something that needs to be continued. So thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Tyler, and we'll move on to our last item on the agenda, 11C.
Approval of City Contract Number 2022-168A11, an amendment to City Contract Number 2022-168, with Dibble for Planning and Environmental Services, Land Acquisition Support Services, Appraisals in the Vicinity of Prescott Regional Airport, Ernest A. Lovefield.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and Michael, thank you for your service. As you're all aware, the Prescott City Council has been exploring the potential acquisition of land near the Prescott Regional Airport for a variety of reasons, to protect the approaches, to promote compatible land use, and also supporting the continued growth and development of the airport. Back on September 13th, Council did approve a contract to provide land acquisition supports, and I have Dibble here, Charlie McDermott from Dibble, who has actually been leading that effort. And it's been underway to make sure that that is in accordance with FAA guidelines, because we're hoping that quite a bit of this will be eligible for funding. In the five months that have transpired since approval of that contract, the city has engaged in negotiations with stakeholders relating to the potential acquisitions. As a result of these negotiations, there have been some changes in parcel size, shape, and assortment. And in your packages, you could see the before and the after diagrams. Essentially, before, it was 490 acres. It is now 574 acres. We've done an estimation of potential eligibility, and the eligibility for FAA reimbursement is, parcels are about 81% of that acreage may be eligible. It is currently under review, but we think that that's the amount. ADOT may also be able to offer some additional funding options. So these are going to be continued to be evaluated. Actual funding amounts and timings are to be determined. In this case, for this work, an independent fee estimate has been performed, and the cost of these appraisals were found to be within acceptable standards. Just so you know, this particular project, meaning this amendment, is not budgeted in the, was not budgeted earlier this year in the budget, but with delays in other projects, budget appropriation is currently available in the airport fund. So I'm available for any questions you may have on this.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you, Robin, for all your hard work. I would just like to say, the main purpose of these land acquisitions is public safety. And we are the ones that are tasked with protecting not only the airport from encroachment, but also the public. So we basically don't have a choice. This isn't optional. Unfortunately, we don't, at this time, have any codes or zoning that we can use. And as a result, we're having to acquire the land. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sabata. I know this is an ongoing challenge with all of the development occurring around the airport. Trying to work out reasonable compromises and agreements with the developers is certainly an ongoing challenge and has been since each of these projects has started. So even though it's unfortunate that we have to look at land acquisition, restating Councilmember Rusing's concerns, public safety is a legitimate issue here. Some of those original development agreements referenced it, but without any detail. And I'm still going back to that general aviation crash we had in November, excuse me, last May, right in the areas that are being proposed for development. And we have to be diligent about protecting those areas so that both passengers and people on the ground will know that they have, they're living in a safe community, and the likelihood of any damage or injuries is going to be reduced as much as possible. So this is just unfortunately a necessary part of that. And getting the appraisals done that meet the FAA requirements and the costs involved are necessary. So thank you for your ongoing diligence here, and Charlie, for your help with Dibble. And we're not kicking this can down the road, but we're moving it forward. So thank you for that. Any other questions or concerns? Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. Robin, it says here in our packet, "The city has been engaged in negotiations with stakeholders relating to the potential acquisitions." Could you please mention who the stakeholders are that we're working with, that will be on the receiving end of these funds?
Well, actually, I don't, Joe, do you want to address this? Because many of them are privileged communications, so we want to be respectful of that. Could I defer?
Yes, I'll answer that. There is a lot of information there that we cannot necessarily address, but I think that it's fair to state who owns the properties that are being appraised, if you're interested in that.
Yes, please, for the public record.
Yes, which is CDC Prescott or Chamberlain Corporation. The Depot Ranch, which is owned by Ron James. There's also a parcel being appraised that is owned by CVID.
Chino Valley Irrigation District.
Right.
Okay.
And one owned by AED or Arizona Eco Development.
Okay.
So those are the owners of the various parcels that are being appraised.
Okay. Because I think the public needs, deserves to know.
And I think that's fair. I think there might be some other owners touched here or there by the appraised parcels, but that's essentially, all of the appraised properties are owned by those four people, essentially.
Mayor. Councilman Shishka.
Thank you. Hi, Robin. We talked about FAA reimbursement. How high on the FAA's list is reimbursement for land?
So land acquisition is not considered a highly ranked item, but when it comes to entitlements, which is that $1 million a year, we can determine where we want our entitlement spent. In addition, the bill money that came out, which is the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act, we have designated three consecutive years, which is over $1 million a year, for land acquisition. And so that has already been submitted to the FAA as a request, is for that money for the bipartisan, those three years, to be used toward some of this land acquisition. As we progress, though, and we go for the runway extension, some of this land will also be commingled with the runway extension. For example, the CVID parcel is actually the borrow or the fill source for the runway extension, because as you go down toward the river, that will flip over. So the timing of this is actually different, and the different funding sources are also, they vary with which purpose for which this land is being acquired.
Okay. So basically, the extension of the runway would be a high priority for the FAA?
The runway extension itself would be a high priority.
Okay. What about the crash zones?
The crash zones is part of your protection of your approaches and safety. And so the crash zones are obviously part of your obligation under your grant assurances to assure compatible land use and to avoid hazards and mitigation.
And certainly, health and safety.
Right.
Absolutely.
And the FAA sets a standard for 5,000 feet off the end of the runway and the width of the departure surface, as the standard for what they believe also should be protected. So these are in those eligible areas.
So let's say that the FAA would reimburse us for, say, crash zones. What are we looking at time-wise?
Well, it depends. Obviously, if we want those entitlements to be spent, first and foremost, on land acquisition, and we defer everything else, including, say, the runway extension, or a new aircraft rescue and firefighting truck, or other needs, if we defer those and simply focus on runway, I'm sorry, in approach protection or acquisition, then it can come sooner. But right now, we have a schedule where it's intertwined with other obligations or requests, such as the runway extension for the design of the runway extension, the environmental for the runway extension, the ARF truck acquisition. So as a result, some of those are taking up entitlement funds. So as a result, some of those are taking up entitlement funds, but those are a decision that a local government can make and prioritize one over the other, and we've provided the ASIP in the past to the council, which is the programming for those purchases and where we want our entitlements and our discretionary funds to go, as well as the bill money. So these are all choices that we can make to prioritize. We really feel that another opportunity is also the Arizona Department of Transportation, and so we're going to be pursuing that as well, because it's actually higher ranked the land acquisition is, so it might be easier to get some additional funds from them. So Charlie and I are going to be working on that, and Tyler are going to be working on pursuing other sources of funds, so we don't have all of our eggs in one basket.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Tanny.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Did I understand you correctly that reimbursement for land acquisition is actually a higher priority with ADOT than it is with FAA? Is that correct?
In their ranking system, their ranking system is actually set up under a different standard and a different, if you will, approach, so it actually has a numerical ranking system, and it is higher for the state than it is for the FAA.
Okay.
FAA safety is, in response to Councilmember Shishka, or Councilman Shishka's question, safety is considered the top rank.
Sure. Okay, okay. I think we're all interested in, you know, protecting land around the airport to the extent that we possibly can, and public safety is a high priority, but there's all sorts of facets of public safety that we need to be prioritizing. So if FAA money for land acquisition, excuse me, is potentially years down the road, that makes some tough decisions for council over the next few months. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I would just like to say, going forward, to prevent these cash dispersments happening over and over, I think we really do need to get serious about passing the AVO and implementing some codes and zoning to protect public safety, so we just don't keep spending this money over and over. Thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you. It's maybe a little off topic, but I know we just came out of a study session where we're talking a lot about public safety, but in, not in terms of the airport, but in terms of fire protection and response times, and I just want to make sure as a council that we keep our eye focused on the big picture of the city and not just focus solely on the airport. We need to look at public safety in-house with our emergency response times, our fire and police as well. Thank you.
Duly noted. So thank you, Dr. Sabata, and we'll conclude this city council meeting by wishing Arizona...
We need a motion.
All right, we need a motion.
I'll make the motion. I move to approve City Contract Number 2022-168A11.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
So again, I want to wish Arizona a very happy birthday on Statehood Day, and again, thank Michael Lamar for all your years of service to the city, and we wish you well in your future endeavors in the private sector.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. Appreciate it.
This meeting is adjourned.